For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you.
For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. For the people who've assembled here, we're going to be starting as soon as a fifth member comes in person and then we'll have a quorum. So just to let you know, we're not just goofing off and disrespecting you, but we'll begin as soon as the fifth person comes in person. Thank you. And traffic was tough today because of the move in. Okay. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, please forgive us for starting a little bit late, but as you know, traffic is a little bit of a problem and we're adapting. So I'd like to call this August 16th, 2022 meeting of the Monroe County Plan Commission to Order. And would you please call the role Ms. Nestor Jellin?
Here.
Bernie Garitas.
Here.
Jeff McKim.
Here.
Dee Owens.
Here.
I'll come back to Dee. I see her. She's on Zoom.
She's on.
We see her.
Hello, I'm here.
Just can't hear her.
Yeah, Dee, we're unable to hear you.
The box is lighting up as if it recognizes you speaking. You just might have your mic set to a different device.
I can hear Dee.
Yeah.
You can't hear Julie either.
Okay.
I hear Julie.
You hear two people? Would it be on our side then?
Well, let the record reflect that Ms. Owens has stated in the chat that she's present.
Okay, Jerry Pittsford.
Here.
And Julie Thomas I saw was also on Zoom.
Margaret Clemens.
Here.
Okay, so we have five members in person and two on Zoom, so we do have a quorum.
Is there a motion to introduce the evidence?
So moved.
Okay, I move that the following items be introduced into the evidence. The Monroe County zoning ordinance as adopted and amended. The Monroe County Comprehensive Plan as adopted and amended. The Monroe County Subdivision Control Ordinance as adopted and amended. The Monroe County Plan Commission Rules of Procedure as adopted and amended. And the cases that were legally advertised and scheduled for a hearing on tonight's agenda.
There a motion to approve?
Move we approve the evidence as read. I'll second. I'll second.
Bernie Garitas. Jeff McKim.
Yes.
Dee Owens.
Can you hear me?
I'm sorry to interject here, but I'm pretty sure it stipulates pretty clear that they have to be able to be heard and seen to have an effective vote. So I would really cautious and even ask Mr. Schilling some guidance here because we do have a quorum. We are just entering the evidence. I would be happy to delay until we fix the technical issue so they can participate. But it does stipulate very clear in the open door electronic permitting meeting that they have to be seen and heard to have an effective vote.
Thank you, Mr. Enright Randolph. And Mr. Schilling, is it okay if we try to resolve these technical difficulties since the difference in her vote at this moment doesn't matter? That she can turn off her computer, turn it back on and try to get her
Might be on our end.
Her audio back up and running in the same
It's not meeting with Julie while can we move forward with the introduction of the meeting before we get to a real voting matter such as
Stay where you are Dee. They'll figure it out.
I just want to have that introduced into the record before you vote on something.
Yes, so, so if it's okay, Ms. Nestor Jellin, would you please call the role for Commissioner Thomas and Ms. Owens? So that or on the introduction of the evidence so they can get to resolving their technical difficulties.
Okay, and we don't need their vote technically in order to pass the introduction of evidence, so I can skip them for now if you'd like and then we'll come back.
And I just like to say, I think that it's it might be on our end since both of them are having problems.
So Tech Services has been communicating that their sound is okay. It's that it's the room that they need to project, so they're working on it right now. So Dee and Julie, you guys are okay. It's just we need to fix it on our end.
Thank you. Let's move along. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna skip Dee and Julie for the sake of the introduction of evidence and just have five members vote on it that are here in person. So Jerry Pittsford.
Yes.
Margaret Clemens.
Yes.
Tron Enright Randolph.
Yes.
Okay, so five to zero for the introduction of evidence.
A motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. I'm gonna do the same as last time. Only calling the people in person until we resolve the technical issue. Jeff McKim.
Yes.
Jerry Pittsford.
Yes.
Margaret Clemens.
Yes.
Tron Enright Randolph.
Yes.
Bernie Garitas.
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
Okay, so let's go forward with the motion to approve the minutes. If anyone would like to move to approve the minutes from the June 21st, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
For second.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve June 21st, 2022 Plan Commission Meeting Minutes. Jeff McKim.
Yes.
Jerry Pittsford.
Yes.
Margaret Clemens.
Yes.
Tron Enright Randolph.
Yes.
Bernie Garitas. Motion approved.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda pertains to administrative business and it is item number one. SMN dash 22 dash six having to do with PNE place minor subdivision preliminary plat extension. And this is And this is in section eighteen of Bloomington Township at forty-eight eleven and forty-eight fifteen North Maple Grove Road. And I believe Ms. Bearman is listed as the planner, but Ms. Nestor Jellin will you be presenting?
I'll be covering for Tammy this evening. So this is an administrative plat extension request for two years. The petitioner had approved, we had approved a preliminary plat for a minor subdivision of two lots on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty. So without final plating that, it would naturally expire on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. So what they're asking for is one extension to go until September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And the if extended, all of the conditions of approval, the plat vacation and three waivers that were approved would also carry forward. So are there any questions? This is an administrative item, so if they were to have asked for more than two years, you would take public comment. But since this is just a administrative for two years, you do not have to take public comment on this item.
Okay, do members of the Plan Commission have questions for staff?
I just really hate being the stickler here, but I would really consider if we wanted to see if we could iron out the technical issues. So if they wanted to participate during this petition, I guess I just.
But do you have questions for staff?
No, that's my only concern right now at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Enright Randolph. And Ms. Owens and Commissioner Thomas, do you have, are you able to unmute yourselves at this point?
Yes. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I don't think that we can hear you Julie, but we could. Dee and Julie in the chat.
Already done.
So if there. Can you see if there are comments?
Yes, Dee mentioned that she did not have any comments at this time.
Okay, and does Julie?
I don't believe so. She has not put anything in the chat.
Okay, so in the meantime, if Ms. Owens and Thomas would please turn on their video. We can entertain a motion and a vote and move on to the second item because they have indicated that they have no questions or for staff. So if you would kindly call the, is there a motion for approval or denial?
In the matter of case SMN dash twenty-two dash six Minor Subdivision Preliminary Platte Extension under chapter eight-five-four dash seven K. I move that we approve the approve the two-year extension to the P and E Place Minor Subdivision Platte until August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, and will you please call the role in Ms. Owens and Commissioner Thomas when it comes to you, if you would either give a thumbs up or a thumbs down, we would be most grateful.
Okay. And I'll note that the plat will be valid until September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, since the original plat was approved in September, actually. So let me just double check that date.
Oh, so it's not what was in the.
Okay, I see in the plat. So September or August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three.
Okay, sorry. So it's September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Sorry for that error in the staff report.
Okay.
So is that okay?
Yeah, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So this is for a two-year extension until September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four for SMN dash twenty-two dash six. A vote in favor is a vote to approve. Jerry Pittsford.
Yes.
Jeff McKim.
Yes.
Margaret Clemens.
Yes.
Tron Enright Randolph.
Yes.
Dee Owens.
Yes.
We can hear you.
Yay.
Julie Thomas.
Yes.
Bernie Garitas.
Yes.
All right, thank you. It carries seven to zero.
Okay, and I'd just like the record to reflect that everyone is visible, that everyone can be vocal and that the comments have been recorded and noted and that we're able to move along. So we move on now to unfinished business and that item is PU-O dash twenty-one dash one. PNG Planned Unit Outline Plan to Rezone Property from pre-existing business to a PUD concerning a parcel located in Perry Township at fifty-one hundred West Victor Pike. And I think Ms. Crisilius, this is your show right now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the property is four point nine acres and is developed and operating as a Sunco gas station. The site is accessed from South Victor Pike and is approximately five hundred feet from the intersection of South Victor Pike and South State Road thirty-seven. It's approximately point one mile from the convergence of State Road thirty-seven and Interstate sixty-nine. It's also approximately point three miles north of the Dillman Road Wastewater Treatment Plan. The property is owned pre-existing business, which was created under the nineteen ninety-seven ordinance and is intended to accommodate commercial and business service uses that were in operation prior to the adoption of the current zoning ordinance. The petition site is adjacent to the agricultural zone, residential zoning like a state residential one and other zoning like light industrial, heavy industrial, and other sites also zoned pre-existing business. So the Monroe County Urbanizing Area Phase One identified the site as employment, which supports employment-oriented uses, including light industrial, manufacturing, development facilities, flexible office space, construction, trades, warehousing, et cetera. Makuah Phase Two identified this area as south side employment. This district includes lands with access to and high visibility from I sixty-nine and State Road thirty-seven and generally designates this a employment land use type in the urbanizing area. Currently, the areas that are zoned south side employment are largely undeveloped with some existing office and industrial development and rural residential uses. Makuah Phase Two states that additional development should preserve landscape character and be sensitively buffered from nearby residential districts. So just a few sites from the staff site visit, a few photos from the site visit that was performed last year in two thousand twenty-one. So the earliest aerial imagery available is from around nineteen ninety-eight, showing the use of a convenience store and truck parking. The county property report card lists nineteen ninety as the construction date of the building and fuel canopy. Imagery from two thousand three and two thousand five shows the site and close to its current state and has generally remained the same for the last twenty years. In two thousand nineteen, the planning department received a complaint regarding the site's brightness of exterior lights, truck idling and noise. Upon review, staff determined that there had been an expansion of the parking area in the northeast side or upper right corner of the photo. The zoning inspector requested and received a use determination submission. The planning director at the time, Larry Wilson, determined that the site was previously a legal pre-existing non-conforming use of convenience store. Mr. Wilson then determined that the pre-existing non-conforming uses plus overnight parking would either be called Truck Stop Travel Plaza or a trucking terminal as defined under chapter eight oh two. Neither use is permitted in the pre-existing or PB zoning district. The site was unable to meet the conditions of either use, which could have allowed them to seek a rezone to a different district. The planning process available that would allow for the combination of uses on the site were to seek a rezone to a planned unit development or a PUD for this petition. The petitioners state that the proposed uses within the planned unit outline plan do not resemble the extensive and intensive uses identified as the Truck Stop Travel Plaza conditional use of chapter eight thirteen within the zoning ordinance. The outline plan has proposed the use of Truck Stop Small. They state the character of the PUD would allow these uses because it represents the travel and vehicle uses adjacent to a principal arterial road. No existing zone would allow for the proposed mix of uses. The outline plan has provided design standards for the above uses and additionally limitations on expansion and intensification of those uses. The outline plan goes on to list some of the limitations. I will list those here. So the convenience mart food service is limited to the existing, which is approximately now nine thousand square feet. The restaurant, which they term small, is not to exceed one thousand square feet. Future development would include an option for the main structure on the site to possibly add a second story addition, limited to no taller than twenty-two feet. The fuel canopies are listed as being would allow the existing canopies. That's approximately fifteen hundred and two thousand square feet. The outline plan includes a future development of electric vehicle charging station with an industry standard canopy or cover. For parking, they have proposed paving and striping and signage to designate truck parking spaces. Truck slash equipment parking is to remain stone gravel. And they say that any paving deficiency is to be completed within twelve months. They have also designated certain amount of spaces for each type of parking, so they proposed thirty spaces for truck parking, ten spaces for equipment, and twenty-five spaces for carpool, ride share, or employee parking specifically on the west side of the property. Designated green space is required under the PUD requirements, so they've stated that it would be a minimum of twenty-five percent of the property with an easement to be dedicated to the Plan Commission or its designee with the owner to maintain landscaping. There is an option for future development of a shelter house with exterior seating. It would be a poured concrete pad with room for six to eight picnic tables. For landscaping for the site, the northeast boundary would be to maintain the existing evergreen tree line, maintain plantings along Victor Pike boundary, not to be fewer than twelve trees, and to maintain and replace as needed the existing scattered trees on the site. So this petition was heard by the Plan Review Committee last year on June tenth. The discussion included concerns regarding safety of drivers through Monroe County since there are limited resources for overnight parking and also concerns with nuisance fumes from truck idling. The illustration on the screen is from exhibit three, which illustrates nearby truck overnight parking locations. The petition site is currently listed as the only location with overnight parking in Monroe County. There were further discussions around the lack of rest stops along I sixty-nine when construction took place and that it was causing a lack of space for truck drivers to stop and rest. The petition was heard at the Historic Preservation Board on June twenty-first last year. The discussion there included some neighbor concerns that are similar to what was heard at the Plan Review Committee and potential impact to the view shed of the Stepbinder Farm located to the south of the site. The Stepbinder Farm has an application pending at the state for a national historic register nomination. There's no update to that application as of this this year. So the Plan Commission heard this as a preliminary hearing last year in July. There was information requested regarding the areas within the county that would read the requirements of a conditional of the conditional use Truck Stop Travel Plaza. Staff did do a spatial analysis into the potential locations and showed that there were limited existing locations suitable for a truck stop as defined under the conditional use chapter eight thirteen. There have been a few letters of support that have been submitted to staff since the date, since the current packet was published. I will show those briefly on screen. So to date, letters of support and remonstrance, there are more than two hundred and thirty listed supporters. There were sixteen individual letters. That does not include the letters that I just showed you. That number also includes a two hundred and four signature petition that was to allow the current operations of restaurant, convenience store, gas station, overnight parking to continue at the current level due to unmatched accessibility and offerings. To date, remonstrators have our eight individuals. So some of the reasonings listed for support and remonstrance are below. Reasons of support is that would be only the only rest stop for one hundred plus miles. The safety of all users of highways for protecting drivers and allowing a rest stop. An increase in truck traffic within city or urban areas. Parking for transit utility workers. A family-run safe establishment. Saves drivers time and money. And trucks newer than two thousand and ten have little to no fumes. Some of the reasons of remonstrance listed are hazardous cargo of trucks, adding new use of overnight parking, diesel exhaust, additional traffic on Victor Pike, and noise of trucks or vibration. So chapter eight eleven, requirements of approval. So the Plan Commission and its recommendation and the Board of Commissioners and its decision shall consider as many of the following as may be relevant to the specific proposal. One, the extent to which the planned unit development meets the purpose of the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and any other adopted planning objectives of the county. Two, the extent to which the proposed plan meets the regulations, standards, and stated purpose of the planned unit development regulations. Three, the extent to which the proposed plan departs from the zoning and subdivision regulations otherwise applicable to the subject property, including but not limited to the density, dimension, bulk, use, required improvements in and construction and design standards and the reasons which such departures are or not deemed to be in the public interest. Four, the proposal will be will not be interest to the public health, safety, and general welfare. Five, the physical design of the planned unit development and the extent to which it makes adequate provision for public services, provides adequate control over vehicle track traffic, provides for and protects designated permanent open space, and furthers the amenities of light and air recreation and visual enjoyment. Six, the relationship and compatibility of the proposed plan to the adjacent properties and neighborhood and whether the proposed plan would substantially interfere with the use or diminish the value of adjacent properties and neighborhoods. Seven, the desirability of the proposed plan to the county's physical development, tax base, and economic well-being. The proposal or eight, the proposal will not cause undue traffic congestion and can adequately be served by existing or programmed public facilities and services. Nine, the proposal preserves significant ecological, natural, historical, and architectural resources to the extent possible. So for the public attending in person and in Zoom, the Plan Commission will vote for a positive or negative recommendation to the county commissioners. The county commissioners will hear the petition administratively and then as a final public hearing that will include public comment to be heard. Tonight's hearing is a final hearing for the Plan Commission, so one more meeting to be heard by the county commissioners. If this petition is withdrawn or is denied by the county commissioners, the site will be required to remove the non-conforming use of overnight truck parking and conform to the legal pre-existing non-conforming use of a convenience store. So staff has met with the petitioners and their representative as recently as June of this year to discuss the outline plan and the standards of approval for a PUD. Staff has identified three points listed above that would need to be addressed or adopted in order to gain staff support. So should the Plan Commission forward a positive recommendation, staff recommends the following conditions. Prohibit overnight truck parking from idling. Petitioner to propose a landscaping plan that includes screening to protect the view shed of the adjacent historic property and that the entirety of the parking lot be paved per chapter eight oh six standards and parking plan submission to be reviewed by the county highway engineer. So staff recommends forwarding a negative recommendation to the county commissioners based on the findings of fact and subject to the Monroe County Highway Department and MS four coordinator reports.
Thank you, Ms. Crisilius. I turn now to my colleagues here on the Plan Commission. Do you have questions for staff? Mr. McKim?
Yes, thank you. I guess Ms. Nestor Jellin, and you know, in your, can you summarize what about this petition would actually, if approved, would actually change the conditions on the ground versus simply legitimizing that that's already been occurring for the last ten years or so? Or more than ten years?
If you approved it as it is proposed, not with any other additional standards?
Correct. Yeah, let's let's start there with what they're proposing.
Yeah, I think Anne did a good job of representing some of the changes that we we had from the petitioners. On August eighth, they submitted a new outline plan. They were stating that there would be limited They were stating that there would be limited designated truck parking spaces. So I think that in a little bit of with some time from the petitioners representative, they could better describe where those designated truck spaces would be. My assumption and my understanding from meeting with them is that they would like to park designated truck parking away from the the proximity of Victor where there's nearby adjacent neighbors. And then I know that there was a proposal to include some some landscaping. But also included in this P U O is to allow for a possible expansion of the primary structure to possibly include a second floor. Some electric vehicle charging stations, but all that would be required under a development plan that would need to meet the ordinance that that is an effect.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions for staff? Mr. Pittsburgh?
Yes, I do have a question. Is this work?
Oh, I'm gonna turn the red one off. Okay, that's why it's okay, not used to these new things. All right, I was trying to find the chapters that address truck plazas or overnight thing. What would accommodate overnight? Truck parking? Or a truck plaza? What what chapters is that?
That is chapter eight thirteen.
Eight thirteen, okay. So if we use the standard in chapter eight thirteen for the kind of use that petitioners proposing. How many parcels within one mile of I sixty-nine? Do you suppose it actually be able to meet those standards?
Just one moment while I find that info. I do have it. It's from. Okay. So the three large main requirements were that the property would be zoned heavy industrial, greater than ten acres and within two thousand feet of a major collector. We also included whether the property was developed or not. So the only property that met all three criteria was one at the location of South Old State Road thirty-seven and south of the intersection at State Road thirty-seven.
Okay. So that's within a mile of I sixty-nine?
Within two thousand feet of a major collector, yes.
Pardon?
Yes, it is within a mile.
Okay. All right, well, a truck getting off of I sixty-nine would then get on State Road thirty-seven. Drive south to old thirty-seven. And continue to this property. Correct? If that was, if that is the only place that meets the criteria, that's the one place Monroe County would provide for truckers, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make that clear. I also wondered the requirement for protecting the view shed of the historic property. Other than the fact that there's more traffic likely to be generated. What changes in the view shed? This building's been there since nineteen sixty-something? Eighties, no eighty-something. Right? The the view doesn't really change. There's been a four-lane state highway adjacent to this historic property for five decades. So when we talk about the view shed of the historic property. I don't see a significant change occurring here. I do see a change in the amount of noise, the amount of traffic. Diesel fumes, those things, but as far as a view shed issue, I don't see it. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Do you have questions, Mr. Garitas or Mr. Enright Randolph or Julie Thomas or? Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, thank you. I I wanted to respond to Jerry's question because it's a good one. Adding a second floor, adding additional parking canopies definitely changes the view. I also think that while I understand the what sounds to be it's presented as altruistic motives for providing a truck stop. This is a business. And there is something that the state has not done. The state failed to provide rest stops on I sixty-nine or the federal government or both. And we're asking residents to accommodate that error. And I'm not sure that that's a fair thing to do. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Mr. Enright Randolph?
Thank you. This kind of goes back to Jerry's questions. And I guess I had a little wrong. I I thought there was really no place permitted in the county that would allow a truck plaza or truck stop slash travel plaza without going through like a potential lot line adjustment or rezone or acquiring multiple lots, but there's literally a ten acre parcel out there that zone correctly that has the same the the needed frontage of a of an interstate or a highway. Like, there's actually a lot out there because maybe that's changed, but I I just want to clear clarify that. Is that what you were saying, Ms. Chriselius?
Yes, there is one lot. The property is not developed. The site is being used, but it does not have developed infrastructure.
Okay, and I guess it goes back to we don't have a small truck stop allowable use in any zone. So like, is it really in Monroe County's interest to create a ten acre travel plaza slash truck stop or versus these smaller? You know, mom and pop shops that allow limited trucks to stop overnight, get off the road safety. And that fit better with our character of what Monroe County I think intends with its comprehensive plan. I would hate to see that we force the hand of a developer to come and build on a ten acre lot that hasn't been developed to put a truck stop in place because we aren't going to address the safety of the drivers on the road.
Thank you, Mr. Enright Randolph. Ms. Owens?
Thank you very much. I just would like to comment on, I've thought a lot about some of my previous comments and I really don't I haven't changed my mind on something and that is to disallow truck idling is fine. To say that not all trucks newer than twenty-ten have to idle, that's fine, but I want to know who enforces that. We don't have the truck police. We don't have that going on. And that is what the remonstrators mostly talked about. I recently had caught had occasion to be I I don't know how to say how many feet away, but quite a distance away from a truck that was just running their air conditioning for the vehicle and it was very loud. And I don't think that I don't think that's something that we can that we can enforce. And so we can't put rules on places that can't be enforced. Another point is that there is other parking. Walmart allows parking if people want to sleep. Sam's with permission. I'm sure there are another place or two, but those are right off the highway with exits and entrances. Semis go in and out of there all the time with stuff that they're bringing to sell and so forth. So it just seems to me that this is just not exactly the right place for this. And that in the past, as I was reading the materials, I noticed that there was a lawsuit back in the nineties. With from this plan commission, trying to bring this property into compliance. And then now since then, they've actually done some building without permission, I think I heard. And so it has to be a previous non-conforming use. That doesn't strike me as being able to enforce whatever rules that we would lay down on that. So that's, those are my comments on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. So, Mr. Garitas?
If if it's denied, what changes?
The overnight parking would have to be removed.
Okay, so it's now, yes, Mr.
Just to follow up on that, but the convenience store could still remain.
Yes, and there's there's adequate proof from aerial imagery that truck parking has been there. It is only the intensification of overnight parking.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Garitas?
So the petitioners stated there's five to ten percent of the west. There's five to ten percent of the west side of the parking or the lot of the lot next to I sixty-nine that will be used for overnight parking. Am I correct in that?
That outline statement where they use percentages has been updated to include a number of of spaces.
That's where I was going. How many, what's that count? I couldn't, I couldn't come into very quickly. I don't remember reading it.
You had that on one of your slides, didn't you?
I do. So the truck parking would be thirty spaces, equipment ten and carpool, ride share, employee spaces would be twenty-five spaces.
Thanks.
Okay, without further delay, I'd like to turn to the Mr. Carmen. And just if you would kindly sign in. And as you know, you'll have fifteen minutes.
My name is Mike Carr, representing the petitioner, P and G Associates. P and G Associates is Charian and Rosie Pilo, the owners and operators of the LLC, which has the station. They bought it in two thousand and five from Bill Thomas and his partner Tom Ducey, who had operated under Sunmart Investments. They had bought the property in nineteen ninety-six from Alan Terry. Alan Terry developed the truck stop, and I'm gonna use that term guardedly because it's causing trouble to use that term, but we'll get back to that. But Alan Terry bought the property in about nineteen eighty-seven on contract, took a deed in nineteen eighty-eight and developed the truck stop. You have Dallas deceased now. You have because it is part of the it was submitted for other reasons, but it became part of this packet on a prior edition. A statement from Beverly Terry, his widow, who was active with him and and the and the property. She was full-time employed, but she did books, records, was there every day when it was operating. And she talked openly about Alan specifically courting the overnight truck parking as part of their business model. Because they buy fuel in the mornings and they buy items in their small store. The store, when it started with them for some foods, but primarily is workwear, jeans, work shoes, boots, that type of things. And and they would, they had a market for sells that to the truck drivers. That continued when they they developed it, the amount of parking, you saw a very early photograph nineteen ninety-eight, I believe, was the date of that photograph. So it had been operation for some. But Bill Thomas and Tom Lucy continued the truck parking. Probably expanded a little bit, cleaned it up, got a little bit more orderly than what Alan did. Beverly Terry told me that when the trucks parked for them, for most parts, they just parked parallel along edges of the drive as opposed to designated slots. Pilo, Charian is committed to even getting that orderly and does. And we with some signings and strapping, you think you can even get it orderly. So the designated request of thirty spaces is not a daily event. The truck parking overnight varies by the day of the week. Weekends are not much of an issue. You don't have the truck traffic on the highway during that much and deliveries to stores. You have some. Certainly not what it is during the week. Tuesday night is probably the heaviest night on the on a regular basis. The other night, there were ten trucks. Saying there's thirty doesn't mean there'll be thirty parked there. There are empty spaces. There it accommodates more than ten as it is right now. But it's not to say that thirty will be a regular thing. I want to, because fifteen minutes is gonna go real fast. I want to touch base on a few things have been said to dispel them. And then we'll get back to why the petition should be approved and and what it really is all about. In the, there was the reference to the exterior seating. I can see a word got dropped out. It says seating six to eight at picnic tables. That was not meant to say sixty-eight picnic tables, sixty-eight seating at picnic tables. Because it's just a small shelter. That's not, we're not trying to build the the fairgrounds out there and with that kind of seating. The apartment, I I noticed that Ms. Thomas objected to view shed issues, which I'm you can't talk about sacred cows. I'm gonna tell you that concept about the view shed and harming the the farm is is a fallacy. There's just no other way to 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 call it. As has already been noted, this has been ongoing since nineteen eighty-eight. The amount of parking has not really varied in the last, since two thousand and five. It's not been expanded. It's cleaned up and a little bit more orderly. But the parking and the equipment parking has been an ongoing fact of life out there for nearly thirty years. The first few years, it was fewer than what it developed over time. The view shed is not changing, has not changed and will not be changing. If anything, the view shed has become somewhat limited by the amount of mature trees that happen to be on the farm. But there there's long Victor Pike, there's quite a row of mature trees that pretty much dominates the view shed from the farm. But as other things. You know, I don't know if Walmart allows parking or not. I actually looked in that and was told no, but some think they do. But I don't know that that there's any, there's any gain or positive say, not here, just do it someplace else. There are homes and residences right off the parking lot of Walmart, just like there there's the fact they're closer to the Walmart parking lot at Walmart than they are at this site and the parking on this site. Just go out and look. You know, it's it is no one's job on this plan commission. There's no job for the plank for the planning staff. To go out and physically inspect the site at nine o'clock at night and see what's going on. It's not your job. You don't have to do that, but you didn't. Nobody did it for you. No zoning inspector's done it. No member of staff's done it. Nobody's gone out there, see what is really going on. What do you smell? What do you hear? What do you see? It wasn't, it it, we did. I have. I've gone out there and I've gone to the trucks and I've got guys out of cabs to interview them. Why are you parking here? What was going on? I parked here because I'm doing deliveries. It's your stores at seven o'clock in the morning. What do you mean? You don't want me to park here? You want your product? You want to go to your stores and buy it? Then you've got to allow me someplace to deliver because I don't have any place else to go. I'm gonna park here. I'll make my deliveries at seven in the morning and then I'm heading home. And before I leave, I'll fuel up and I'll be buying some food and eat on the road. That's what's going on. And that's part of, and that's been a business model for thirty years. You know, and the remonstrators, there's one that essentially is in your packet. You can get the name off if you want. It happens to be retired attorney and he's remonstrator. But his his letter is interesting. Now, as retired attorney, I would assume he's careful with these word choices. And so, and so I'll take face value what he says, but what it does say your plan commission members, pre-existing commercial uses are designed to accommodate employees' business, et cetera. We, we're talking about Amy's wife who live not immediately adjacent, but down the road, just a little ways. We're downhill from the gas station to convenience store at fifty-one hundred South Victor Pike. We've used it for thirty years. It's been there. It's an asset to our community, to our neighborhood. We support its continuation as is. Important words, as is, because that's all we're asking for. That is absolutely all we're asking for is to be able to continue what has been being done as is. I'll come back about the apartment. Now, to be fair, the letter goes on and and objects to this, but it objects in a way that talks about being proposed expansion of the permitted uses. The proposed expansion of permitted uses, the outdoor seating. Formalize the carpooling that all parking already goes on. It goes on at every gas station you go up thirty-nine or sixty-seven, you see it. That the BP out of Sample Road for years, that would just see six, eight, ten cars that would park there along the edge of the drive, carpool and drive to Indianapolis. And 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 so we have some of that. So that is actually in here as a listed permitted use to allow that to continue. So it's it's an environmental issue, nothing else to limit the amount of cars on the road. But the only other real use new is proposed apartment as an accessory use. If that's a problem for view shed or anything else, take it off, scrap it. We don't need it. That is not, there's no intention to build the apartment now. If you look at it, was suggested as proposed accessory use, meaning and is specific restricted to owner or employee occupied. It is entirely possible you go forward in this economy and post pandemic that somebody will want to live there and work there at the same time or buy the station and wants to be an owner, operator, manager and live and live on site. So we proposed a possible accessory apartment limited to two bedroom and limited with that as an accessory use. If that's offensive as a proposed possible use, then take it off. Because that has nothing to do with current operations. Let's just look down the road to the future. So let's get back to the petition and why I'm concerned about the word truck stop. You know, to turn to your questions, I remember the laughter I got from Larry about the ordinance was written about travel plaza truck stops. Sixty-nine is coming. He foresaw it. Sixty-nine is coming, he foresaw it. There will be these, somebody's gonna want to do it, so we're gonna write an ordinance that allows it. But they're gonna have a tough time finding a place they can do it, and that's exactly what you got. You've got an order that's so onerous, onerous for those travel plazas will not be one built in Monroe County, and that was intentional. At least on Larry's partner, I can't say county commissioners or you when you, you reviewed and recommended adoption of that, that definition. But I'm troubled by the continued focus on truck stop. Because in the, in the petitioner's statement, it was in there before, and I repeated in the recommended statement now. I'd listed those things that are out of your definition about travel plaza, truck stop. All the type of uses, facilities and things that would be as part of that. And then what we actually do, and there's almost no comparison, fueling. The convenience store. And, and the truck parking. We are not a truck stop, we are not a travel plaza. The problem is your, your ordinance only has a one-size-fits-all, you're either a truck stop or you're nothing. And there's no in-between. And so I tried to craft a name, I called it truck stop small, I had to give it a name. Larry kept calling it truck stop because to him, truck stop meant truck parking. And if you're doing truck parking, therefore you are a truck stop. And that's really important, because there's a lot of things, I'm. Wait, five minutes, okay. There's a lot of things I would like to talk about, I'm not gonna have time to, this is in the petition, if you've read it, it, most petition is not new. But I wanted to address the issue, the history of truck parking overnight at this location, because it's important. I did a Freedom Director's request, we did a use determination request. To, to the planning department, to Larry, he did his opine, your truck stop and, and truck parking, and it's not allowed. By pure application of zoning ordinance and the definitions of, of the zones, he's, he's correct on that. That really wasn't a full answer, and I'm disappointed that's where he stopped, and he wouldn't go any further. We did a request, a Freedom, uh, a Public Director's request, staff complied, produced on everything supposedly they had and could find with regard to this property uses history. Objection, whatever. What was not in that was the nineteen ninety-one litigation. Uh, now, why it wasn't in there, uh, apparently planning department didn't maintain a record on that, even though it, it actually been included, the planning department in that. I got copies of those documents that are in the packet, uh, as part of that litigation for Mr. Shilly. Cause David did the right thing. He knew we had a public records request out for it, those would have been, should have been part of the response. They were not made available, they came in, and, but we're coming up on the hearing of the VDA on the, uh, use determination. And David did the right thing, he got those too many, because they should have been produced as part of the public records request. And those are important. Was it nineteen ninety-one, contrary to what you, you understood that to be? It was litigation, your zoning inspector at the time, that letter is in the packet. Uh, did a notice of violation letter because the complaints about parking. The complaints about the parking were not about truck parking noise, that's not even mentioned. Okay, was what it came down to, and you can see this litigation that followed when Mr. Schilling had to file. An ordinance violation lawsuit, and they ultimately settled it, that settlement agreement, and what needed to be done is in the packet, and the case was dismissed. What it came down to was. Because of the truck parking you're doing, th- there was an issue about paving and what could be left in stone. Apparently, there must have been a dusty issue, because part of it was industrial retardant, uh, an oil spray. Some landscaping, some buffering along the edge. Nothing about, you can't park trucks here overnight. And we know that was going on. Everybody knew what was going on, it's been going on since nineteen eighty-eight, this is nineteen eighty-one, so it's only been a couple, three years. But the complaint that the zoning inspector responded to was the heavy truck parking. Daytime park, truck parking is almost non-existent, they don't, nobody drives there and says. I'm gonna park here for the day and do, go do something else, they fuel up, buy food, move on. The truck parking was the overnight parking. And the litigation that came to the plan commission, the settlement agreement that David worked out about the paving and the oil retardant and those things. Came to the plan commission for approval. Because of this enforcement action, it ultimately went to this, to the, uh, board of commissioners for approval. Tip Tilt signed off on it, President, President of Plan Commission at times signed off on it. It's interesting, when, when I got the records that David produced. Uh, that led me to tracing the minutes for the plan commission when they would have approved that settlement agreement, that proved the litigation being settled. What I found was, is on your plan commission agenda as the truck stop. So nineteen ninety-one, that this was a truck stop, and Larry Wilson has said repeatedly, it's the truck stop, it goes allows truck parking. That tells me since nineteen ninety-one, the plan commission, the county commissioners, county attorney, and the zoning inspector. All knew there's overnight truck parking going on there, and it's continued. When that got settled, without David's filing a lawsuit alleges the truck parking was his only violation. As far as I'm concerned, that's, and the plan commission approving everything, and the board of commissioners proving everything, that blessed truck parking as permitted use. That was an interpretation of the use and the ordinance at the time, because he did not cite that as violation, he only cited the, the dust. And the reference, and the, uh, paving amount, and required remediation on that. Never touched the truck parking that was ongoing, that was a source of that, as far as I'm sure, and this is part of the litigation that's going on. That I believe the court will find, that since nineteen ninety-one, this truck parking has been a, no permitted use on this property. Blessed by the plan commission, blessed by the commissioners, and blessed by your county attorney. I don't know how else to interpret that litigation, what they did and what they didn't do, which was, say, one word about the truck parking has to stop. So when Pilo comes along in two thousand and five and buys this business, the truck parking was a known fact. Was a known condition that all the governmental bodies involved in land use issues had already apparently said, that's okay, and he buys it, that understanding. So, what is changing? Nothing, except to formalize and formally bless the truck parking overnight. Limited, the truck parking, the trucking industry is changing rapidly. My interviews with the truck drivers, I don't idle engines, I have a power pack, it burns. Uh, one tenth to one quarter of a gallon of, of diesel fuel to run the power pack, to run my, either my AC or my heat if I need it. You can't hear it from very far away. Pilo and I were there, that's why I wish somebody could come out and get and find out yourself, because you got roster, you say, noise and fumes, there are no fumes. The DEF, the DEF that's required to be added to the, all diesel fuel takes care of that, the, the burned exhaust. They use the DEF, fuel is, fumes is not, is this not the old diesel fuel that you used to know that you grew up with? The, uh, uh, try and watch my time, I'll wrap it up about one minute if I may. Uh, the, uh, the noise. Was there an engine idling? The one night it was there, it was one truck had an engine idling. Walked down to the end of the park down toward, towards Victor, near to Victor Pike, I couldn't hear it. But short of that, those, and those power packs you're operating are, are, you can hear those too, if you're within a, a reasonable distance of truck. I walked down, halfway down in the, the parking lot, couldn't hear them again. Fumes are non-issue that, ask a driver, what about electric plug-in? Don't do that, I can't do it, my truck's not equipped for that, and in my knowledge, nobody is anymore, because. States don't require that, most states don't, if you do, but most don't, so no, they're not building trucks now, truck cabs that are equipped to do that plug-in. We're equipped with power packs. Are there some older trucks on the road that will continue idle engines for lack of something else? Probably. Uh, as our pilot's experience is checking from time to time, is it's rare to find. To find one, and rarely more than that, sometimes none, so. It's not a problem, there's a, a, there's a need for it, the business model has become more important, this first night we talked about this. I downplayed the issue of the impact on the business for doing this, and I was wrong. Uh, I mean, when you, and, and, uh, maybe it's post-pandemic, the world has changed and economies are changing. Everything counts and everything's important, and the, the business associated with fueling up purchases are important to store, to, to survival. But more important is the reasonable, safe place to park. Which is merely a continuation, what's been going on for thirty years, is appropriate, but I ask you to, to support the words.
Thank you, Mr. Carmen, thank you. Um, I'd like to, uh, turn now to the rest of the people who are here in, um, the room. Are you here to speak in favor of this petition? Or, uh, or another petition? In favor, if you would, one by one, come and sign in, and, uh, you will have three minutes to speak. If you would, uh, I, sign in, state your name, and then you will have three minutes to speak. Sir, just to let us know your name.
William Shad.
Thank you, Mr. Shad.
I, uh, I had some friends that built this truck stop. Forty-five, fifty years ago, and I was just a kid, and I used to hang around their garage. And as they got it built, and it was getting established and everything, and I thought it was just very interesting, it was good to me as a kid. They had a, uh, fueling station on Eleventh Street. I always hung out at it. And they kind of disappeared, you know, they go to the truck stop and. This is all, but I've watched it over the years grow, because I've lived in Monroe County for fifty-two years. And, uh. There's always been trucks there, of a night, somebody sleeping, they've always been there. They might not have been able to park just right, or it wasn't appropriate. Maybe just around the truck stop or anywhere they could to get some sleep, but it's always been there. I don't see no harm in it. And, and you want to see bad truck stops, go to Indianapolis. That'll scare you. This is clean. Pilo takes care of it. He mows, he landscapes, he's willing to do more. Pretty reasonable. I think an asset to Monroe County. Uh, we don't have any truck stops at that one. So, yeah, I think it's. I think it's worth having overnight parking. Really do. Gotta have some sleep. I wouldn't want to pass somebody that ain't slept. Make bad wrecks and trucks do. That's all I gotta say, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming tonight, thank you. Yes, is there someone else here who is here to speak in favor of this petition? If not, we're gonna turn to people on Zoom. Are there members of the public who are here on Zoom? Who would like to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please raise your virtual hand. And, um, and then tech services will identify you and allow you to talk. So Natalie Blaze. If you would, um, please state your name, and then you'll have three minutes. Uh, to talk to us about why you support this petition.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Natalie Blaze, and my family and I are prior neighbors to Sunmart beginning in two thousand and one. I would like to begin my statement by asking questions. I would like to know when the complainants against the overnight parking purchased their property. Was it after the gas station was in existence or before? If after, I make the claim that they knew what they were purchasing and where and what the ramifications would be for doing so. If it was before, I would like to hear specific data on what changes have occurred on the property, on their specific property since the arrival of the station and its overnight parking. Regardless, as pointed out by the slides provided earlier, you know that you have a handful against the overnight parking and an. Overwhelmingly majority of folks supporting it, which is in my opinion, the ultimate issue at hand. Those against the overnight parking, you've stated their complaints, however, have they done any testing to prove any sound violations? Have they tested to prove the air quality condition? Just because they say it is so, why does that make it true? Because their nose knows, why doesn't my nose know? I've lived there for twenty years, I never once had a sound issue or an air quality complaint to offer. If I had, I would have made it known, because my nose disagrees, does my opinion on that not matter? As someone who is in favor of the continuation of overnight parking for the safety of the drivers and the support of the business owners. I don't feel the council is in a position to make a determination based solely on the opinion of a few and not any clear data. Unless those complaining offer clear data provided by an impartial company. How can the council vote to change something that has been in place for years, and in my opinion, is grandfathered in because of its years of service that is provided to the community? Opinions are opinions, not facts. I ask that you demand data to back up the few offered complaints before you take your vote. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Blaze, and just for the record, um, when people are speaking, um. Uh, they don't really ask questions of us or of staff at this time, but we appreciate the, um. The intention of your questions, so thank you, Ms. Blaze. And so the next person who will be speaking is, I think, Ryan and Vanessa Klow. Um, so if you would please unmute them, and I don't know if one person will speak or two people will speak.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, so this is Vanessa Klow, I'm, uh, commenting on behalf of me and my husband. Um, thank you for opening the floor for pu- public commentary. I'm grateful for the commission to see community input. There are a couple of points I would like you to take into consideration as you can, uh, consider your vote. First is safety, I recognize there are some community members who are concerned about the safety, should this measure be continued? In the twenty years, so even before Rosie and Pilo purchased the, the Sunmart gas station. I have worked and lived in Monroe County, and overnight parking has always occurred at this facility while I've been a resident here. I have never once felt unsafe regardless of the time of day, and believe me, I've had to make midnight runs for cough medicine for my girls or. Something else, um, and I've never not felt safe. Um, I've also never, uh, been concerned about truck idling and fumes. As Mr. Carmen pointed out, I have driven there late at night, early in the morning, and never once saw an issue. Uh, the owners have taken important steps over the years by adding new lights and security cameras to ensure all patrons are safe. The facility is also a hub for both local and state police, which I hope the commission and community will take into account. Additionally, since the commu- commission last acted on this request, I've seen a rise in overnight parking. In the off and on ramps on Third Street, Second Street and Highway thirty-seven exits, regardless of the free parking at some Bloomington businesses. As we know, this is a dangerous practice, especially for young drivers and new folks to the area. With the addition of forty thousand residents this week, I do worry about the community implications this will have moving forward. Uh, the other point I wanted to make is reputation. How will this decision influence Monroe County's reputation amongst the transport community in addition to other industries that utilize Sunmart's overnight parking? As the commission has already discussed, there are no other truck stops in Monroe County. Has any of the commissioners met with these groups and spoken with them about how this will influence their view of the county? Willingness to deliver commu- deliver goods to the community and their buying habits, i.e. tax revenue for the commu- community. Sunmart deeply benefits from overnight parking as these drivers purchase gas and goods at the stations, which in turn benefits all of us. Finally, we should, as we know, these small businesses, business owners. Provide incredibly important services to Bloomington, Ellisville, Smithville, and other local communities in Monroe County. And if they don't feel supported, it could influence their willingness to make our community a priority moving forward. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it. Um, I, I do want to mention, just as a quick side note, Mr. Carmen did not address the, the apartment. I did want to mention, as a patron of Sunmart, Rosie and Pilo are always there. Always, regardless of time of day. And so, just something for the commission to take into consideration is that it's been very difficult for them to find staff, and so having a place where they can take a nap. I know would be deeply appreciated. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Klow, and is, uh, Mr. Klow going to speak as well?
No, he is not, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I see Brian has his hand raised. And, uh, you have three minutes, Mr. Brian.
Yeah. I just wanna say, you know. When I hear all this, I think of, uh.
Sir, we can barely hear you. Mr. Brian? You're, uh, kind of crunchy, we can't really.
Some of my trucks were the ones parked by Rosie and Pilos, we do the local utility here for the local company. But I don't want my trucks trying to weave in and out of these other gas stations where, you know, those gas stations ain't big enough for our trucks. It's the thing. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Are you finished?
Okay, about now. Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. Are you, um, finished with your statement, or did you want to, uh, try again?
Okay, what I was saying is, I'm, no, the gas station that, with that happening around in the town here. Oh, damn.
We can hear you.
I, my trucks occupy the back parking lot behind Rosie's, we park our trucks there in the evening and come there in the morning. It's a safety issue, my trucks can get in and get fuel without happening around in the town of Bloomington, try to find diesel fuel somewhere. But also at the same time, they buy their breakfast and their lunch from Rose and Pilo. I, I just want to say, I think it's a safe location. Um, we've got cameras back here as well as what Rosie and Palo, I know they got security cameras as well with the lighting, so. Um, that's all I wanted to say.
Well, thank you, Mr. Brian, thank you for speaking to us, I'm sorry for the technical distortions, but I think we understood your point. Um, I also see that there is someone calling in by telephone. If you're, uh, going to speak in favor of this. If you're uh, going to speak in favor of this petition, please press star nine so that we can uh, unmute you. Do you see anyone? Okay, so we will now uh, turn to the people who would like to speak in opposition to this petition. Is there anyone in the room here uh, at the courthouse would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Uh, so I don't think you would like to speak, okay? Um, is there anyone uh, online on Zoom who would like to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Um, Mr. Jeff Morris? If you would, um, when they allow you to unmute yourself, would you please state your name and uh, and then you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Jeff Morris. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I live across the street from the gas station and one of the things I want to speak to right away is the comments about the view shed. The view shed drastically changed two years ago when a row of mature spruce trees along Victor Pike were cut down. And I'm, my understanding is those were a requirement of the ninety-one court case that came up earlier. Um, one of the concerns I spoke about in a previous meeting was the slow growth that has taken place on the petitioner's property over time. Some examples include piles of dirt that have been dumped here and there to expand parking as Ann showed in the slide earlier. Um, the tree removal I just mentioned, some extra tr- trucks parking adjacent to houses here and there. Small changes here and there may not make much of a difference at the time, but added up over time, it becomes a much bigger problem. The current zoning of the property is pre-existing business. Increased intensity is not allowed. On page twenty-six of tonight's packet, the petitioner admits that, quote, "The truck parking during the time Sunmart Investments owned the property had been broadened to include equipment parking," end quote. That alone is an increased intensity and a perfect self-admission illustrating what has been occurring. My second concern is the lack of ability to enforce a no-idling policy as Ms. Owens mentioned earlier. I know in the packet tonight, it states that overnight idling will be prohibited. That sounds great on paper, however, that clause means nothing to neighbors at three AM when we're listening to the rumble of an engine idling or a refrigeration unit on a truck cycling on and off all night long. In tonight's packet, on page twenty-nine, it states that, quote, "The petitioner has pato- patrolled the truck parking from time to time. It is rare to find an engine idling," end quote. I disagree with that. The parking lot is not as full as it used to be and I'm appreciative of that. Yet at least once a week, I'm awakened to the sound of a truck idling in the middle of the night alongside the cones meant to prevent parking. If preventing overnight parking was enforceable, then it should have stopped a year ago when the no overnight parking sign was first installed. No overnight parking seems straightforward. If parking is allowed but not idling is not, enforcement will be even more challenging. My other concerns come not as a neighbor, but as a Monroe County resident and the precedence precedent this would set if approved tonight. There was a court case against the gas station in, in the early nineties, as was mentioned earlier. It doesn't specifically mention overnight parking. However, it does stipulate other requirements the owners at the time and any future owners are expected to follow. Some examples are Evergreen, Evergreens planted to provide screening for the neighbors year round. Those were cut, cut down in twenty-twenty, as I mentioned a minute ago. The entire parking lot should be paved to minimize dust and trash should be picked up on a regular basis. None of those are in full compliance with the nineteen-nineties court case. This case dates back several owners, however, the county has not been following up on ensuring compliance. If this PUD is approved tonight, it sets the precedent to not worry about zoning. Just wait for the county to call out any issues and then submit a plan to accommodate what you've already been doing. This is a negative reflection on the county and makes me question why we even have zoning in the first place. Lastly, an I sixty-nine corridor study was completed several years ago before I sixty-nine connected to State Road thirty-seven. That study is included in tonight's packet and one paragraph jumps out. It reads, quote, "Throughout the State Road thirty-seven I sixty-nine corridor, the county definitively will not permit truck stops and fueling stations to be developed. As an intersection of State Road thirty-seven and I sixty-nine, this location might be considered for such a facility. Because of the character and intensity of existing residential and business development, the county has reviewed this issue and specifically recommends that truck stops and fueling facilities not be developed at this location," end quote. As I've mentioned in previous meetings, I support the permitted uses of the gas station. However, I do not support overnight parking and do not condone the idea that unpermitted expansion and then coming back later and saying it's been this way for years should be allowed. In reading through the letters of support tonight, it's clear that most of the supporters don't know the full story. The blame for zoning violations has been placed.
Mr. Morris, I'm sorry. Thank you. I've allowed you to go over by about a minute, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I see that Patty and Dave Bush are here and um, if they, if tech services would allow them to unmute, if you would, um, you would have three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patty Bush and I'm speaking for Dave and myself. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, just a few short sentences here. Uh, the diesel exhaust from idling trucks is noxious. I work outside a minimum of five hours each day. Um, that was my choice, our choice, when we bought this place over twenty years ago. Um, it is how we care for our animals and how we enjoy our property. Um, I can smell the diesel. There's no doubt about that. I don't smell it every day. But depending upon the weather, if it's still on a really hot day, I can smell it. If it's really, really cold and it's still, I can smell it. And I don't want to breathe that. That's not why we bought sixteen acres. Idling of motor vehicles contributes to global warming and is linked to asthma, decreased lung function, cardiac disease, cancer and other serious health problems. The petitioners propose no idling signage at their site. This will be exceedingly difficult to enforce for the following reasons. Limited onsite staff to enforce this policy. Extreme hot and cold weather conditions requiring idling to heat or cool the cab. Idling keeps engines warm, prevents diesel fuel from thickening as temps get cold. Idling ensures that alternator keeps the battery charged and idling overnight costs nothing to non-owner operators. I also want to add that several times it's been mentioned that uh, semi-tractor trailers have nowhere else to park except along the side of the road. This is not true. Walmart has been accepting semi-tractor trailers parking there for a very long time, years, as has Sam's Club with permission. I just want to reiterate that engine idling has impacts that negatively affect air quality. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Patty. Is your husband also wishing to speak?
Uh, I am and I would like to say a, a brief statement. Um, we moved to this property in nineteen ninety-nine and it has always been um. The gas station up on the corner has always been one that I have frequented. And I have noticed an increase in uh, business there over the years as well as truck parking, specifically uh, overnight parking of trucks and, and uh, I guess it would be contractor equipment. Uh, that is uh. That is something that has changed over time. Uh, I think it's unfair to the neighborhood and I certainly think it's unfair to, to Rosie and Pilo, who by the way, I think have done a great job of maintaining that uh, that restaurant, convenience store and, and, and filling station. I think they're a credit to the community. Uh, I think it puts them in a, in a real bad position if this is approved, that they can uh, trucks can, can officially park overnight, but they cannot idle their, their trucks because uh, as, as has been stated before by several people, uh, enforcement of that is going to be not, not, not challenging. It's going to be unenforceable. So it, it puts them in a, a, a bad position. They have to be the truck police and uh, I don't think that's fair to them. Or to uh, those of us who do have to breathe the exhaust that uh, that we hear, that we, that we smell upon occasion. Um, due, due to the uh, the weather being what it is, so. Um. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. I'm going to ask if anyone is calling in by telephone who would like to speak in opposition to this uh, petition. If so, press star nine or if you're attending by Zoom, uh, please raise your virtual hand. I know there's a comment in chat, but uh, I don't know what that pertains to. Um, okay, so uh, Mr. uh, Carmen, you have a five-minute rebuttal. Thank you.
Good morning. It's Mike Karma. I want to read a couple of letters. There are several letters kept coming in and then and he's capturing, I got them all posted in the portal, but even one was late this afternoon just for it over this way, but this one came in yesterday. I think it was about the group Ann read. Uh, this is for Brian Hendrickson. I'll just read his statement. My name is Brian Hendrickson. I'm supervisor for Townsend. Townsend is a contracting company that does, well, he goes on to say. And we occupy the back lot behind the station. We have for the last fourteen years, we, we do the local vegetation for Duke in the area. So it's the contract crew. Duke doesn't have their own employees that do the maintenance of the uh, the easements to clean out brush and trees, do all that. They contract out. Town, Townsend is one of those. Anyway, he goes on. This is the central location for my employees. I have them coming from Bedford Green County and Owen and Morton County. The parking is convenient and very secure with cameras as well as we, we have cameras. Men buy their breakfast and lunch as well as getting fuel for the trucks. There's no other station Bloomington area that can provide the space along with fueling trucks. Uh, there are several of the letters that uh, Ann showed early are neighbors of this one, Emma. Uh, Cluckey talks about being across the street from the station and I disagree that it causes any annoyance, harm or inconvenience. So there are people on side, but to me, the issue is the support and this is not an applause meter contest and count the number of noses and how many for, how many against it. That's not the point. The point is, is facts, the use. It is a use as needed. The county uh, did something similar uh, many years ago when we started having the tourist cabins. There are not bunches out in the county. There's a complaint with regard to one. That led to an enforcement action, but what it really led to was planning staff crafting what is now your tourist cabin uh, conditional use part of the ordinance because what was recognized, there was a need. There was no use that permitted that, so they defined a use, set the standards and then did it. That's what we tried to do at the truck stop small. We set maximum size five acres. It can't develop into the travel plaza, big truck stop is it? Cause limited five acres. It uh, we tried to impose some other things that would say this is a middle of the road gap between fuel station only with a convenience mart and the truck stop travel plaza that everybody thinks of. Even the report that's read earlier about the paragraph that stood out, when it talked about truck stop, it's talking about the truck stop that is envisioned by your definition ordinance, not this operation. So uh, again, I would submit and even Mr. Town, Hendrickson, his statement about the equipment parking been going on for fourteen years. It's not a recent expansion. And then the last comment, uh, I think, you know, last couple. Make sure that we understand, we talk about what's the difference between equipment parking and truck parking? Equipment parking has no body staying in the equipment overnight. It's just a place to locate the equipment when they're here for a period of time, sixty days, ninety days, whatever that contract is to do the easement clearing for Duke or years ago, many years ago is Miller Pipeline where they had a bunch of infrastructure contracts, the city to put in water lines and sewer lines. Then they were parking equipment out there. That was long before this owner. Uh, and so it's, it is something of a seasonal use, but there's no engine idling with that. The designated areas for this parking, that equipment parking to be closest uh, to Vernal Pike, because that moves the truck parking further away from Vernal Pike and, and, and the neighbors that way. So the, the, the it's intentional in terms of how we define areas for that reason to put the non-driver occupied, no risk of overnight engine idling at the area closest to the, to Victor Pike and any neighbors. So uh, you know, there's lots more to be said. I'll be uh, some point just getting repetitive, so I won't bore you with that. Uh, would, would submit that uh, that the fortitude of this having gone on so, so long is that it gives you history. It gives you case history. You've got lots of people saying this is not a problem, noise, odors. You've got a few that say it is. I mean, that, that, but the industry is changing. The issue of truck idling is, is waning. It's not gone yet, but it's certainly on its way out and, and it will be. Uh, and, and I would say relatively soon, uh, the older trucks be gone, the power packs are in place. They're not an issue.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carmen. So I bring it back to uh, members of the plan commission and I'll start with my right. Mr. Enright, Randall?
Uh, yes, so just. I want to kind of sort through a few uh, different comments that have been made. So as, when you look, the formal Walmart, um, Sam's Club uh, is in the city. I've not the current location, the fir- former location. Sam's Club. Area. So I'm not exactly sure what the city stance on permitting overnight, but I would be curious if they find themselves in the same situation we are currently where they're kind of permitting something for safety purposes, but they don't really have an ordinance that permits it. My question though is Walmart has been stated that is in the county zone. It's a PUD. And are they permitted to have overnight parking or? Or would they have to uh, go through that process too to permit that use? Or even go through a rezone process to, you know, uh, potentially create a, a travel plaza, truck stop. But you know, they might not be that close to an interstate, so, or have that much frontage, so that property might not be permitted in the first place. I know that's kind of a long question. I'll, I'll be more focused. Wouldn't they find themselves out of compliance if they permitted overnight parking for trucks as well?
So the, the zoning of the Walmart is GB.
Oh, sorry.
The zoning of the Walmart is general business, not PUD.
I, I have my color, but to the, my point, would, would they be finding themselves out of compliance if they permitted overnight truck parking?
If you have, um, so the, the use determination that Mike Carmen was bringing up was with uh, truck stop travel plaza is a primary use. So it would have to be a separate primary use to allow overnight truck parking as a permitted use under that same use determination.
So we, we just find ourselves in the same situation. I, I just want to sort through some of these comments that have been made. Um. Again, I don't know about the Sam's Club. I, 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 I think maybe we should see what the city has to say on that one, but that could be a fun conversation. Now, there's been a lot of indication of smelling diesel and things, but from my observations, a lot of that was during the day. So none of this would prevent any trucks from gassing up, coming, staying during the day, right? This is all due to the overnight request, right? So the comments that we heard of smelling diesel during the day during operational hours of the convenience store and, you know, uh, other operations going on. They're gonna still smell that diesel, right? Unless everyone just decides to go elsewhere. So I wanted to kind of sort through that. It's a little, not a question there. Um, and the idling. I'm not gonna say let's leave it to our state legislator to address this. They haven't, but a lot of states have addressed that through state code. And I, I don't know, I'm, I I'm either way on that one. Um, but what I want to address is there are numerous ordinances that we don't have adequate staff to go and police and enforce. So this discussion of oh, we should just throw that out the window because we can't go out there and, and force and inspect that. It, it is not just, because there's a lot of different enforcement issues that we have trouble keeping up on. So I wanted to kind of sift through that one too. Um. But what I feel is that we made it real difficult to permit any overnight truck stops in Monroe County. And we're well past the time to address this. And we need to consider, do we really want to force a ten-acre undeveloped property to be the only place that's gonna be able to permit this? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enright Randall. Mr. McKim?
Yes, are, are we allowed to uh, address questions to the petitioner's representative at this point? Is that our usual process?
I'm going to turn to uh, Mr. Schilling and Ms. Nestor Jalen. Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Karma. I just had a, a couple of questions here. Um, so first of all, one of the um, uh, letters of remonstrance stated petitioner proposes paved or gravel parking over the existing septic drainage field. A septic drainage field should not be used for parking. And I guess I'd, I'd like to hear your reaction.
It's not correct. There's a, the dr- the, there's a lift station down uh, close to the right away. But nobody can tell me who controls that. They even sit, couldn't get an answer out of the city utilities. Uh, they have a, a separate man in the field who's in the grass area west of the parking area.
Okay, so nobody's proposing paving or turning that into a parking lot or anything like that. Thank you. Um, and then also, I'm just, I'm curious as to. Um, and then also, I'm just, I'm curious as to. Your reaction to or comments on their, the three recommendations that staff made if we were to uh. Sort of already addressed, but the first one's prohibiting overnight truck parking from idling.
Where our our pl- plan would be to with signage. Indicate truck uh, engine idling is not permitted. Try to police that a little bit, but. I agree with even the remasters say policing that is is not going to be easy and. It's not so other than to actively discourage it, uh, but both by signage and and by word when. Drivers come in to get anything or we go out patrol the the lot and and find a truck idling to tell them they've got to stop, shut off or they need to leave, but. That that's going to happen. I just, my point is it's going to happen very rarely, but we'll try to, we will try to actively discourage it, but we're not going to be able to.
Okay, uh, and then the second is petitioner to propose a landscaping plan. That includes screening to protect the view shed of the adjacent historic property.
I don't know how we do that. Now, there are some landscaping out there, but screening to protect the view shed. First of all, I disagree that. That Stephen should be of consideration, quite honestly. I mean, that, this has been there, the the, we're talking about an adjacent property. I don't know where and when. The view shed from other property became a controlling factor on what what we're doing. I mean, I just, I don't, I mean, or other properties too, just out of BS. But with regard to that, look at the elevation change. I mean, we're, great change, what seventy-five feet from where the farm is to. The the parking lot where this building is. I don't know how we're, in our lifetime, we're going to get trees and shrubs tall enough that's going to screen that view. Can it be improved with some additional trees? Yes, but if 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 what the issue is some green trees, shrubs to to do some. Visual barrier, but as a screen is is it's just not going to happen. The the topography won't allow it.
Thanks. And then the third is entirety of parking lot to be paved per chapter eight oh six standards. And parking plan submission to be reviewed by the county highway engineer.
Yeah, so the the plan is submitted, called for additional paving to phase it in. The area that we. In in our details would not pave, would be limited to the actual long-term truck parking. The paving standards for the prolonged sitting still truck and the weight on it is quite a bit different than the drive. And that's a problem. I mean, you've seen this, uh, young trucking was in a few years ago for a waiver on paving because of where their heavy trucks were on the. The part of the drop, Rob's industrial park uh, that they bought just up across the road and up the street from this. They got a waiver of paving on part of it because what the heavier trucks do on paving and that's an issue of that. So. Some additional paving yet, it actually proposed a phase in is is an expense and an overnight expense is a problem, but but the. The some area be left in stone, yes.
Okay, so your intended paving though is already in the outline plan. Okay, thanks. Um, just, yeah, I guess my final comment is just that I think Tron's point was particularly well taken that how is having a giant. Ten-acre plot uh, truck plaza, which is envisioned by our ordinance, more in the interest uh, the community than having a truck stop small. That's already here and operating. And I'm pretty convinced by the arguments that provided throughout the discussion of this petition that. The status quo is really working pretty well and this petition is just legitimating the status quo that's been going on for thirty years. For a use that is clearly needed and desired by the community. I mean, the biggest change I see is the possible accessory apartment for an owner employee. And while the uh, Mr. Carmen indicated a willing to jettison that particular use. I think it's kind of cool. I like the idea of having an owner's apartment. I think it's a great idea. So, you know, I I intend to support the petition as is.
Thank you, Mr. McKim. Are there uh, comments to my left? Mr. Pittsburgh.
Yes, thank you. Um. First of all, I wanted to note, uh. Commissioner Thomas is in danger of giving me a bad name and saying something about altruistic motives and what I was saying earlier and. I should never be encouraged or be accused of uh, making decisions based on altruism, but. Anyway, my concern here is for uh, the viability and profitability of a business that is. Uh, generating tax revenue. For the county. I mean, they're paying their county tax. The uh. The uh, state road taxes drive from the sale of diesel fuel and gasoline. So we need these places in order to generate that money. Uh, I wonder uh, when the neighbors speak of the diesel fume concern, if some of that's not originating from State Road Thirty Seven. Uh, and in terms of noise, possibly the same thing. Maybe not idling, but I know that my first apartment uh, in Vincent's was. Fairly close to Interstate Forty-One and there was a Kroger and a Kmart building between us and stuff. And I could still hear heavy trucks through the night. There it just is endemic to that kind of uh, situation. So anyway, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, I wanted to point out those are possibilities. Uh, I appreciate Mr. McKim's comments. He covered some of the things that. I had been thinking of and even some that I had that I thought were good remarks. So anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pittsburgh. Mr. Garitas, do you have any comments?
Again, Tron hit a couple right on the head. The one about uh, you know, was it desirable to have trucks slide into. A big box or a shopping center or something where there's nothing controlled. Our our goal is to. Kind of regulate those things and keep activities the way we want them as far as safety and 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 uh. Predictable for the public and and places like this do that. For people coming into the community that may or may not be the mayor with it, uh, these places also assign. Needs to what that 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 individual that's in this case driving the trucks. Need in the morning or need in the evening or need at some type of day, some time of the day. So when they're ready to go, they don't have to go through the community looking for something to eat, coffee. Uh, socks, blue jeans, whatever they need to uh, to to keep doing their business. Uh, so I think that we want. These areas. Uh, in our ordinance, and I think we want these uses because. It allows that predictability of what somebody can find when they go there to utilize them. It needs to be, it's going to be utilized. I I read the daytime trucking versus the nighttime or overnight parking. And I don't know that. I I don't know that, other than cutting the time period. I don't know that uh, trucks emit less fumes or they probably air conditioning systems or cooling systems. Probably operate less in the night than they do in the day. So it seems kind of odd there. It would be allowed at some parts of the day and not others. We've got ordinance, we've got rules in the ordinances for light, sound, air quality, the paving, the things that. That are protected already. So I don't know what the differences are when we allow at daytime and we don't allow in the nighttime. Uh, obviously, people are trying to sleep, but again, we've got those conditions contained in the ordinance. It's right next, right next to State Route Thirty Seven. It's right next to I sixty-nine. You've got a stoplight there. There's probably Jake breaks on the trucks going on. I don't see a difference. From what is there now and and what we would have later and what's in the surrounding area. I'm glad you asked about the conditions because I was going to go through those, but you asked the right question. So thanks for that, Jeff. Uh, and I liked Tron's point again about having these. Cottage truck stops or these small truck stops where you don't have ten acres of new construction. That all become, all of a sudden becomes a love's truck stop. Uh, I think these are compartmentalized and I think that, I think that for the public, especially in this predictable use where it's at. I think that it's. It's very desired and, you know, in our society now with. The with with uh, Amazon and all the trucks that are on the road delivering things back and forth, this needs only going to increase. Uh, and I think that the Walmart parking lots may get smaller. Who knows? Anyway, tho- those are my points. I I, I think it's historically had this use on it. Uh, I've said this at other meetings. I, I've seen it. I've lived in the community for 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 long enough to say that. I've been through there. It's known as the Victor Park, Victor Pike Truck Stop or the Truck Stop. And you always see trucks in, you see them at any time of the day or night. And I I I think it's a predictable use for the whole of the community. So.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett Tuss. Uh, Commissioner Thomas or Ms. Owens? Ms. Owens, do you have any comments?
I see. No, I have comments, but I I I'm, I've heard everything I need to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, then we bring it back. I have uh, one or two comments actually and um. Just to ponder. Um, what a truck stop was in nineteen ninety-one is not what a truck stop is today. You know, there's been a, like Mr. Carmen has uh, mentioned, you know, the whole trucking industry has been. Under evolution and revolution and especially I would say with regard to intensity. Of use, the the um, push on the truck drivers to make um, their schedules and to. Uh, deliver things and freight uh, across our nation um, has really uh, been intensified. And so when we have a truck stop. Zoned as a truck stop. The intensification of that use without any qualification like um, Mr. Carmen had. Uh, suggested like truck stop small um, matters. You know, because we don't necessarily want it to be one of these huge plazas. But I don't see anything here that enables the mitigation of the. Growth of the size and the intensity because what existed in nineteen ninety-one is vastly different. From what exists today in terms of. Truck driving intensity as well as the pressure put on the truck drivers to get from point A to point B. Within a certain amount of time. Um, and in this particular area, another major change since nineteen ninety-one or. When the truck stop originally began is um, this interstate. That has gone through our, through our community and that also leads to an intensification of uh. Use that we may not have foreseen. In in the beginning. So I think that, of course, there was um. You know, a failure for the interstate system to not make. Uh, um, a system of truck stops across the newly paved ground, but I don't think that that's something that we can solve. Here by a local plan commission. I think it needs to be a coordinated activity. Um, and so. I, you know, I'm, I'm still uh, very concerned about this because it seems as though. It's just rolling, you know, the purpose of planning is to shape a community. To shape it into what you want it to be and to prevent it from becoming your worst fears. And I don't really see anything in this other than just saying, um. Let's just eat, let the business owner do what he wants and uh, and the community. Uh, has really no say in it. That's, that's kind of the way I see it. That uh, that we have a, we have a responsibility to shape what should come. At this, how this particular spot should evolve regardless of who the current owners are. And I um, I don't see that in this uh, particular petition unless uh, any of my colleagues would correct me.
I've got a brief comment maybe. Uh, so we, so. Part of what we're talking about is whether or not a truck stop use with this overnight parking. Would be permitted or predictable in a zone classification, but this is a P U D.
Right.
And the purpose of a P U D is to develop. A site that has unique characteristics for what its intention is. Uh, and then extract some sort of open area and other conditions that are within the ordinance. And to me, this, this meets that because it is a, it is a property that. Is being used for, for what the anticipated intent is. The apartment, I think that's a pretty cool and good idea. There's another one in town that does the same thing and the the owners live there, right? Uh, but that's what this being a you, a P U D takes the unique characteristics and qualities. Of this property that aren't really anywhere else and says, this is what we want to do with it. And these are the conditions that we're going to apply to it. That's the whole purpose of the P U D, which I'm not a big fan of getting rid of the P U D, or so the ordinance, other than it makes staff have to patrol. And look at several different types of developments, but that's the unique characteristics that cause that, which is a pretty good concept when you get right down to it, in my opinion. Uh, again, I think when people go through town and they go through the community and they see that, that's what they think that they're going to. Find is exactly what the petitioner wants to do. It's going to be controlled because they're coming through the planning process. They're coming through the site design process. They're going to file a development plan. They're going to make it within. As close to the ordinance as what we can get it for something that is unique. So those are, those are my comments to to maybe the question that you asked, Margaret.
Thank you, and I'd also like to uh, a- address your comments, Madam Chair. Um. It it seems to me that, I mean, I think that's a legitimate concern, the the unchecked uh, growth and increase and intensification, but. I think the the um, outline plan that's being proposed here does exactly that. I mean, the pro- the proposed uses. Uh, are all very tightly constrained. I mean, the size of the restaurant is limited, the um, the number of parking spaces for each of the different types of parking are limited. Uh, the the uses are are specified. Quite specifically, I think, uh. In a way that that I think is much more, um, you know, like I've said before, advantageous to the community than. Uh, what actually would be permitted by the the truck stop uh, use that's already in the in the code. It just seems to me like I I I. What's being proposed here in in writing in the petition really is, is self-limiting in terms of the uh, increase in intensity.
Thank you, Mr. McKim. So uh, would I come back to my colleagues? Is there any further comment or motion?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pittsburgh.
Uh, before I do.
No, no red.
Okay, before I do, uh, just to be clear, this is a planned unit outline, right? Okay, so once the outline is approved, then there'll be oversight and all that stuff. So whatever. Is agreed to, it's going to be monitored, they'll submit. Complete design plans. Okay, because right now it's outlined, but there will be a a design that follows, correct?
If approved by the county commissioners, they will be required to submit a a development plan.
Okay, which would then be a P U D event on other petition. Kind of.
Yes, it would be reviewed administratively by staff like any other commercial site plan.
Okay, exactly. And I'm sure it will be updated in administrative meetings about. That process, if there's any problems, right?
It would only be administrative uh, review by planning staff unless the plan commissioner, county commissioners added that as a. A requirement of the planned unit outline.
But I I just was kind of pointing out that there was a problem. It would, there is a form that be brought up then. As an administrative issue for the commission. Correct? I I don't know if I'm, Jack, are you following me? What I'm saying is if we agree to the outline.
Yeah.
And they bring in a plan that's or a design that's not consistent with that, and there's pushback. You'll bring it to us.
Right, it would, it would almost have to be an outline plan amendment if they're not able to meet the standards that they set forth in the outline plan that. If received approve, approval, then they would have to meet that standard or come to you with an outline plan amendment.
Okay, all right. I I just, we haven't done one of these for a long time, so I wanted to kind of be clear that, you know, we don't approve this and. They walk off and do whatever they want, you know, and stretch the meaning of what they agreed to. So. Anyway, with that being said, and case number P U O dash twenty-one dash one. Uh, a request by P and G Associates LLC. For planned unit outline uh, with the waiver of final hearing. Uh, this is a property located at fifty-one hundred South Victor Pike. Consisting of four point nine plus or minus acres, zone pre-existing business in Perry Township. It is my motion that. The uh, plan commission. Forward this to the county commissioners. With a positive recommendation based on the findings of fact and subject to the Monroe County Highway Department. And then M S four coordinators with also including uh, the following conditions. Number one, that petitioner post the sign in the area where overnight parking. Will occur that encourages trucks to refrain from idling as a courtesy to surrounding residents. Not a full requirement, not to, but a requirement that they ask that it not be done unless necessary. Uh, condition. Uh, number two. uh number two that the uh petitioner dedicate and convey open space per chapter eight eleven meeting those standards that are in exhibit one of tonight's packet. Uh condition number three, the entirety of the parking lot will be paved per chapter eight oh six standards and parking plan submission to be reviewed by county highway engineer over a period of five years in accordance with a phased plan and design agreed to and monitored by staff. And number five or number four, petitioner update the outline plan to ensure standards are consistent among all submissions and include all required design standards, including setbacks for proposed structures, parking and landscaping. And number five, that if according to the remonstrator uh remonstrator con- uh comment tonight, if uh trees had been removed in twenty twenty that had been previously required that those trees be uh replaced from where they were removed. That is my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to send a favorable recommendation to the county commissioners based on the findings and subject to several conditions which I will read again. Make sure that I have them down right. So one, that the petitioner post signs where overnight parking may occur and to encourage no idling of trucks as a courtesy to adjacent neighbors. Um two would be to dedicate and convey open space per chapter eight eleven as shown in exhibit one. Um three is that the entirety of the parking lot area be paved per chapter eight oh six standards and parking plan be submitted and reviewed by the highway county engineer within five years of the approved outline plan. Is that okay to word it that way? You had said a phased plan.
Um Yeah, go ahead. If if you would please include the word phased.
Okay, so over five years in a phase.
If it's cross prohibited to do it immediately.
Okay.
You know, one time, then they could make an agreement for a plan that includes phasing that is agreeable.
And then um that the petitioner update the outline plan um. Did you include that one as well?
Yes.
Okay, that the petitioner update the outline plan to ensure standards are consistent amongst all submissions and include all required design standards including setbacks for proposed structures, parking and landscaping. And lastly, that the trees removed in two thousand twenty uh be replaced with the development plan submission.
Yes. And would you confirm that those trees were removed in twenty twenty?
Yes, I know which one you're talking about. We have aerial photography, so I'll call the rule.
Thank you.
Tron and Ray Randolph?
Yes.
Dee Owens?
No.
Julie Thomas?
No.
Bernie Garitas?
Yes.
Jerry Pittsburgh?
Yes.
Jeff McKim?
Yes.
Margaret Clemens?
No.
Okay, so the motion fails four to three and we can entertain another motion to either deny the petition or send no recommendation or this gets continued.
I I guess with the descending votes on this, it was any of the sticking point with the no idling overnight? And if so, if 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 that's can get you over uh to support this, I'd be willing to support uh another motion with that additional condition.
Tron, if you think it'll work, put a tr- uh motion forward. That's the best way to do it.
I'm really indifferent here and it's very unfortunate that we're two members short um currently with our plan commission, so we have actively eight appointed members currently um. It's just a
Seven.
Oh, just seven, sorry. Thank you. Um I I'll attempt a motion um. Jerry, did you, did you make some notes? Because I was gonna use all of yours um.
Yes, I do have notes.
I I
Can you just reference all the
Okay, I would like to reference all the conditions, including the sign to encourage people not to idle, but also add the condition that there is no overnight idling. So not replace any, just add the one additional.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to add an additional condition that's enforceable of no overnight truck idling. It's been moved and seconded. I'll call the rule. Dee Owens?
No.
Julie Thomas?
No.
Bernie Garitas? Jerry Pittsburgh?
Yes.
Jeff McKim?
Yes.
Margaret Clemens?
No.
Tron and Ray Randolph?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion fails again, four to three.
Right, um in the matter of PUO dash twenty-one dash one um I move that we forward to the board of commissioners without a recommendation. Well, okay, I was I was going to include uh all of the same conditions that Jerry Pittsburgh added.
I don't know.
Or do we not do conditions if we have no? Okay, well then, I just move that we forwarded to the board of commissioners with no recommendation.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to send PUO dash twenty-one dash one to the board of commissioners with no plan commission recommendation. Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Bernie Garitas?
Yes.
Jerry Pittsburgh?
No.
Jeff McKim?
Yes.
Margaret Clemens?
Yes.
Tron and Ray Randolph?
Yes.
Dee Owens?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries six to one.
I'd like to thank everyone here for my colleagues and the people in the room and the people online and the people, Mr. Carmen. Uh this is a difficult uh case. I respect everyone's opinion and I know I feel respected too by my colleagues for our difference, but uh we're trying to do our best. And so thank you very much for the robust conversation and for coming out tonight to participate in this deliberative process. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're moving on to the next item on the agenda and um that is REZ dash twenty-two dash six. And that concerns a property at forty-five ninety-five North Maple Grove Road. And I believe that Mr. Myers will be uh discussing this case with us. And if you would be so kind as to um begin, I'd be grateful.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. So this is the Ray Barn Renovation Historic Preservation Overlay Rezone located at four five nine five North Maple Grove Road. It's in Bloomington Township, section eighteen. All right, so this request is um for a uh parcel totaling seven acres. It's currently zoned to state residential one or RE one. And the request is to establish the historic preservation overlay uh on top of the existing uh zoning district. Most recent Indiana historical historic sites and structures inventory of the county survey from Monroe County is um available through the uh SHARD database and it ranks this property, the Ben Owens Farmstead, as outstanding. Monroe County interim report nineteen eighty-nine also ranks the farmstead as outstanding. Um this rating O means that the property has enough historic or architectural significance that it is already listed or should be considered for individual listing in the National Register for Historic Places. Um so the intention behind the establishment of the HP overlay uh on this petition site is in order to provide the petitioner the opportunity to establish a additional dwelling uh on the property. There are a number of historic structures on the property, including a farmstead house, barn, log cabin and um some length of dry stone walls. There's also a cemetery located on the petition site. But the main uh target for the uh renovation and project for of the current property owner is the barn structure. They intend to renovate the inside in order to provide a uh additional dwelling area uh for them. Um their family has uh stayed on this on the, has owned the uh property for quite some time. And they would like another uh structure to live in while their um children move into and their kids move into the um farmhouse. So as I stated, um this is for the historic preservation overlay, um not just a standard rezone. And what that means is that um the uh underlying zoning district does not go away. Um the HP overlay uh provides a a a flexibility and protection that's designated with the within the HP district. Um essentially, um if there are any conflicting um conditions within the RE one zone and the HP overlay district, the most restrictive requirements will apply. So in order to uh uh receive a a positive recommendation from the historic preservation board of review, um there has to be certain designations and criteria that have to be met for the HP overlay. Um these items here you see on the screen, one through seven are uh the criteria examples. And the ones highlighted are the ones that uh the HP Board of Review uh uh talked about and decided that these were the ones that fit best for this petition. These were also um uh confirmed with it with the current property owner. And they were able to establish um or provide more information regarding each of these three items here. So I'll read uh first one, in association with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of county history. Number three, the distinctive characteristics of a type, period or method of construction, and five, high artistic values. So it was uh the understanding of the board, the historic board, historic preservation board of review that um this property uh met those three at least and that they provided a positive recommendation to this overlay um rezone. All right, so here I have the location maps on North Maple Grove Road. Here on the right side of the screen, I have the um SHARD database map that indicates um the property as outstanding and also has some other items identified here such as the cemetery. Um here we have the current zoning map, RE one, as I stated before, and the comprehensive plan has it designated as Nakua Suburban Residential. Here we have some aerial pictometry of the petition site as well as some photographs on the ground. Down closer to the bottom of the screen is the uh old print shop, um which is also a dwelling unit or a guest house that has existed for quite some time. Then here is the uh barn structure that they intend to renovate into a dwelling space. And then the existing um uh original farmhouse up here. There's a pool and some uh other minor outbuildings over here and then the log cabin that's uh historically significant um is over here as well. So here's just some more pictures. This is the 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 print shop or guest house building that I spoke of. Um just a small outbuilding here on the right side of the screen. Then we have the barn structure um that also has the inside that is shown here that will be uh undergoing the renovation to establish um a dwelling area. More pictures here. This is the original farmhouse. And then just other photographs around the property as I continue scrolling through these images here. All right. So here we have the uh petitioner's letter to the plan commission stating their intentions for the property as well as a submitted site plan for the property. Um if the rezone uh does go through for the HP overlay, uh the petitioner will proceed with um acquiring the necessary permits to engage in the renovation process. Um and that will also have to go to the HP Board of Review for a review um to make sure that they receive a certificate of appropriateness. And here we have a couple pages worth of a brief history of the Owens Farmstead provided by the petitioner and says also included included in the packet that was provided to you. So I'm just gonna scroll through these. If we have any questions about any of the information in here, we can come back to it. And then these are some images provided in that same um uh exhibit that was provided by the petitioner. And finally, an exhibit that um shows the SHARD database that indicates the outstanding nature of the property as well as some other items uh that are worth noting. All right, this brings me to the recommendation. Uh staff recommends forwarding a positive recommendation to the county commissioners based on the findings of fact and the petition meeting the following HP overlay criteria. Um I spoke of these for number one, in association with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of county history. Two, the distinctive characteristics of a type, period or method of construction, and three, high artistic values. I will not take any questions.
The members of the plan commission have questions for Mr. Myers. Mr. Pittsburgh?
Yeah, I have one question. Why did they not identify uh work of a master? Because that that stone fence that exists there can't be duplicated. I don't think there's a person around today that could do that work. So anyway, just my notice.
Mr. Garitas?
Quick curious question. If with the pool that was, if it's in the back of the house, if if they would designate this to the historic, the HP, would would that be permitted just the building permit through the county? Or would they have to go and go to the historic preservation board in order to get approval to put the pool in that's now if if they were gonna do it? If it wasn't and they wanted to do that later. Does that make sense? I kind of garbled that up.
Yeah, so once this is designated as historic, every building permit that comes through, we will take it to the historic preservation board of review. And um I think at that point, they could address whether it needs a certificate of appropriateness because this is a blanket overlay. Um certainly, a new swimming pool would not probably be under their um largest concerns of alteration on the property, but they would they would have a chance to review it.
Okay, thanks, Jackie.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, um I just want to um thank uh the petitioners for bringing this forward. I this is absolutely a jewel in Monroe County's crown and I'm really um thrilled that they're interested in pursuing this. I think this is a great use for the property and preserving it for future generations is phenomenal. So I'm I'm grateful to them for their hard work.
Thank you. Okay, um I'd like to turn to the petitioner, the petitioner's representative if they're here. Um if you would be so kind as to uh make yourself known by raising your hand or pressing star nine on the phone. Do we see anyone? Okay, I'd like to ask if there are members of the public who are attending uh via Zoom. There's no one here in the chamber. Um who via Zoom or by telephone would like to speak in favor of this petition? If so, raise your hand or press star nine. Okay, are there members of the public who would like to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, raise your hand or press star nine. I think only staff is on uh on the call now. So we come back to members of the plan commission. Um are there any further questions or discussion or motion?
Uh yes, in the matter of REZ dash twenty-two dash six, rezonal quest to add HP overlay. I move that we forward uh the petition with a positive recommendation to the board of commissioners based on the petition's compatibility of the Monroe County Comprehensive Plan and waive the final hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to send a favorable recommendation of REZ dash twenty-two dash six and a historic preservation overlay with waiver of final hearing. Margaret Clemens?
Yes.
Tron and Ray Randolph?
Yes.
Dee Owens?
Yes.
Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Bernie Garitas? Jerry Pittsburgh?
Yes.
Jeff McKim?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero.
Lovely. Um now I know that we're going to have staff reports, right? Are there any re- uh further reports from staff?
I do not have anything.
And Mr. Schilling? Okay, so uh are there any objections to adjourning or?
Move for adjournment.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I know it was tough, but thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. I know it was tough, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. Yeah.